For national plan. This evening, we are going to get started with our Board of Assessors meeting. And the first item on the agenda for the Board of Assessors is to sign our tax commitment for the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. And this sets our municipal tax rate, so I'm going to hand it over to Tim and Jen to give us a little bit of explanation on this agenda item.
Not last year, council was so. The mill rate is just on full valuation. Five hundred twenty nine million, five hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. This is the new reevaluation number. On the sheet that tax be raised, maximum allowed tax rate on the right hand side. That tells us the number by the state calculation, the minimum tax rate we can set is twelve thirty. And the maximum we can set based on our taxes is twelve ninety two. On the left hand side, let's see the town manager finding instructor put together with the new mill rate overlay would look like. We're going to put the overlay which is for abatements. We talked with the assessor and right now our current mill rate thirteen forty two per thousand. It can go anywhere from twelve fifty four to twelve forty six was the numbers we looked at. Because we do the overlay for the abatements, the law will start with our company council pick of twelve fifty. Because I know that Boston just had their evaluation talking to the county. They had about sixty abatements throughout the year, they were there a year ahead of us. They had about sixty abatements, so I would recommend either twelve fifty, twelve fifty two to stay in an overlay of two ninety eight, one point nine. Just because people were, there were a lot of people visiting K H C, which is a center, they currently had some, some abatements, both administrative and probably uh. So I, my, I recommend fifteen or twelve fifty two. I'd like to do twelve fifty two. I want to thank Jen and Turner for doing all that work, putting the chat draft together and making it so it's fairly on the. Can I answer any questions? No, other than basically we're dropping it, if we go to twelve fifty two, we're dropping it right around that ten per unit, so hundred, hundred bucks on a hundred thousand doing it for a nap. We have to be careful when we've done it every year of going too low because then we're going to yo-yo right back. I'm, I'm comfortable with the twelve fifty two because again, looking at, um, because I have reached out to her also, looking at the amount she got. And the questions K R P got, I'm sure we're going to see for abatements and I'd rather settle it here than down the road. Rather have the money there to pay. And the two cents isn't going to make that much of a difference tax wise.
And you said, sir, coming from the big.
And the other ones we have are seeing the type one, we haven't heard any of them. You say. Twelve fifty two, correct, we drop it ninety cents for, for a thousand.
Uh, so my question is, is on both of you have mentioned to drop it to twelve fifty two, but on this sheet it says it's recommended to do the twelve fifty. And the overlay would be two ninety eight, one twenty nine, so twelve fifty two or twelve fifty?
You're twelve. You're twelve fifty over there. That was just as of one finalizing over a thought back. That came up and I was thinking about a week, on Friday, yes, I'd recommend twelve. Those are close because two ninety eight looks like what's right there. I don't know, two cents can make a lot of difference, Ken, but I feel more comfortable with the three twenty six, oh twenty one overlay.
We have been trying to stick close to three hundred, definitely we don't need much of it.
So the two cents, this is coming from a tax payer. The two cents doesn't make that much of a difference on my tax bill, but it makes a difference in having three hundred twenty six versus two ninety. It gives you an extra twenty eight thousand play. So on a whole, the two cents really on a couple hundred thousand dollar house. So that could be the difference of five or ten. People are doing abatements for twenty to thirty thousand, or ten thousand, or five thousand, whatever it is. That extra money makes a difference.
The difference of ten dollars a year on a five hundred thousand dollar.
A lot of free shit that you can put up twenty thousand dollars.
Can I read all of your stuff?
In, in the back, in the back, sitting there versus ten dollars on a five hundred thousand dollar. There are, okay, a lot of people. After thinking about that talk from Jen responding, um, she brought up something, so I don't think in about it, looking at them talking to the county. I would, I would recommend twelve fifty two, but service can accept twelve fifty two. I just would hate to be shorted into the. If we had a ton of abatements, we have to fund those abatements on house, so if we're going to fund, we'd ask for the. And do a special sound. Not just twenty eight thousand.
Can you, do you have something to add?
I, I. I, I, what happens with the money that's not working?
The fact is you do end up paying stuff.
This is, this is one of those for twelve. I do the best we can and hope for the best, I, I gotta say, I tried to reach out. The only place that I could capitalize on is the county and council. But again, it's completely different, yeah, it's a different dynamic, they're using a revalue, you can't even. I'll just put my input for the three of us up here. I'm, I'm aligned with what John is saying. Updated recommendation of the twelve fifty two, just because of the amount of visitors that are concerned about. What they're seeing and to be able to pack those, essentially meet those needs. And that still does come back to us, so essentially after the town, if it's not used, I think for the time.
And Councilor James, you were also offset with the twelve fifty two?
Yes, ma'am.
So now, Sam, you need a motion from us to set the mill rate at the twelve fifty two, correct?
Right.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Oh, I'll make it since I'm, I'm out of going to get slammed, slammed here. Uh, Madam Chair, I move that we set the twenty twenty. Twenty twenty six, uh, no rate, a thousand per, at twelve dollars per thousand.
There's a motion and a second, we'll take a vote. Councilor Minahan?
Yeah.
Councilor James?
Yes.
And also a yes. Mill rate passes, ready to do that. We have one more item of business under the Board of Assessors. And that is to sign the York County Assessor's return. And what the York County Assessor's return is our bill from the county. And what we will be the three percent that we will, of our tax bill that we will owe to them. Uh, so the total that the county is saying that we owe them is five hundred thousand, five hundred ninety one dollars, ten sixty nine cents. And what we need to do is make a motion to pay this. And sign.
There, I move, hey, what counts, assesses, you heard. Date is the second day of July, twenty five, we were assessed, uh, about pay five hundred thousand, five hundred ninety one dollars. And sign with support. Do and descend office on the first day of September twenty twenty five.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, Councilor, and, and Councilor James? And I'm aye as well, motion passes three zero.
What interest rate did they assess if we don't pay on time?
Seven point five percent eventually.
Seven point five percent.
I was just gonna say, we also needed a good piece of information from the read up that Berna put together for us. It just showed a lot of information, actually, the average dollar increase amount to all the different categories. From single family to multi units to utilities, um, the average percentage increase, the average bill, that's twelve fifty, so it's a little bit adjusted for what we just chose. The average tax difference and the average tax difference percentage, I just wanted to give that to you for your information.
This is also included in the document yet?
It is not, she just gave us two.
Can we, can we get this included so the public can see it, or I think this could be very beneficial to answer a lot of these questions.
Someone else, so, yeah, someone pretty.
But across the board.
Okay, date is six forty three, we are, uh, the town council. We have three, we got to come out of the assessors.
Madam Chair, I move that we pause the Board of Assessors.
Please have a vote in the second, take a vote, Jeff, John, aye. Board of Assessors. Oh, that we know. Does that need to be in the motion? We have a motion and a second, take a vote, Jeff, John, and I'm aye as well. Motion at six three zero, we'll get it together. Okay, now, let's call the town council meeting to order at six forty three, we have three councilors present, Councilor Minahan, Councilor James, and Vice Chair Costello. Now, she could not join us this evening, she is emptying her nest this evening and bringing her daughter to college, we wish her luck, Savannah luck in college. As well as all of the other local kids about to embark on their collegiate adventures. Um, the first up, we're going to do approval of the following minutes for the town council meeting on eight, twelve, twenty five, can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move we approve the town council meeting minutes dated August twelfth, twenty twenty five, as written.
We have a motion and a second, uh, all those in favor, Jeff, John, and I'm aye, motion passes three zero. Um, moving on, we're going to have the signing of the treasurer's warrant. Uh, we still have two warrants to sign this evening as we're still paying bills from the fiscal year twenty five. Uh, just a few left, this should be the end of it, correct, Jeff?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Uh, so first up, we have the treasurer warrant for fiscal year twenty five, dated August twentieth of twenty twenty five. Can I get a motion to sign treasurer's warrant?
Chair, I move we sign the first treasurer's warrant dated eight twenty, twenty twenty five, with the amount of eighty thousand, seventeen dollars, twenty two cents.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion on them?
We just want to mention that, um, that eighty thousand dollars, seventy five thousand of it is the covert for a check for, another covert that was done for.
Say vote, Jeff, John, and I'm aye, motion passes three to zero. Uh, then the next treasurer's warrant is for fiscal year twenty six, um, dated August twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Chair, I move to sign the fiscal code six warrant dated eight twenty twenty five, with the amount of one million, thirty two thousand, sixteen dollars and eight.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion on them?
We have a two, um, so not including school, my bit, so because this is, we have the law. We have the road loan payment, four hundred and eight thousand in home payment, we have the fleet loan payment for the station, two hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and two dollars. That is a big portion of that, as well as we did get the police there in town hall, that is in there twice because of what happened.
So we have a motion and a second, um, take vote, Jeff, John, and I'm aye as well, motion passes three to zero. Um, next on the agenda is public comment, this is to comment on items not on the agenda, is there anyone in the audience?
I'd like to point out the very poor quality of the audio tonight, it's barely understandable.
Yeah, we're going.
And, Eldron? I don't know if it's exactly on the agenda, but we mentioned the undesigned aid fund. That will be twenty eight thousand dollars richer if no one gets their taxes abated. And you mentioned it would come back to us, when does it come back to us instead of the town? But I just think going forward, it would be great if you'd stop thinking of our tax dollars as your money, so if there's twenty eight thousand dollars extra, maybe you can think of that next year and. Give some back to the taxpayers or raise our taxes less.
We appreciate your comments, Tamara, thank you, uh, is there anybody on Zoom that would like to say anything? We've seen them, uh, we'll move on to unfinished business and.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to reconsider our actions from eight, twelve, twenty five, new business number one.
Second.
Um, we have a motion and a second, do we have any, actually, I would like to have discussion on this, Jeff, if you could explain why you would like to reconsider last week's, our last meeting's motion.
So, so this was in regards to, um, the license renewal for Happy Valley. Um, in discussion with the council, we were, some questions came up after the motion was already placed on the table. And my. Recollection of the feeling of the, the council was that we were trying to back out of it to get more answers. In doing so, we voted the motion down, which essentially, um. Failed the motion, so it, it was in order to actually have this discussion, have more conversation, we need to back out of that to, because the, essentially, we were planning on. Getting more information to have better clarity, so that's what this reconsideration was doing, is basically saying we want to open it up to more conversation. Again, uh, in essentially places like that on the table, so now that we can continue on with the agenda.
So with reconsidering the motion that was killed, Jeff made a motion to reconsider it, so through his reconsideration, do we vote on it through the reconsideration, or do we have to?
No, so either we reconsider it, it puts it back on the table, then you start all over again with a whole discussion and the changes and so forth, then you're allowed to make a new motion to vote to pass that.
The, the, the current motion is reconsideration, we need to vote on the reconsider.
Correct.
Is there any more discussion, John?
No, I'm with.
We have a motion and a second, so where I take a vote, Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Motion for recon, motion for reconsideration passes three zero. So.
Now.
Now we're back on unfinished business.
You have unfinished business number one and number two.
Okay. Okay, so, um, now unfinished business number one, um, is regarding the Happy Valley LLC liquor license renewal. Um, well, just for informational purposes, the town clerk reached out to the main liquor board and main fire marshals. To receive clarity regarding question eight and special amusement permits. Um, we were advised if the requirements at the municipal level are satisfied, approval is acceptable. The business is in standing and there have been no issues reported.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the liquor license renewal for Happy Valley, and we'll see.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion? Uh, I do just want to add that, um, the reason I questioned this was pretty much just to define, um, the entertainment, the word entertainment. Um, that was connected to question eight, because in their permit, they were, they said that no, they were not going to have entertainment, but then in the following agenda item, they were asking for, and, and, um. Uh, the, um, the special amusement permit. Um, so with, and a little bit of investigating, what I'm under the impression of, and how it was explained to me, is that. You need, um, review from the fire marshal if you're a dance club, if you're having like a, um. It's not, it's, it appears to me that Happy Valley has typically just a guy with a guitar in the corner, they're not like a moving pole dance club or a pole concert, um, spectacular like that, so. Um, where they're leading it up to the municipal level, I am comfortable with believing that they do not need the, um, approval of the main fire marshals. Are in agreeance?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, so we have a motion, any further discussion? Um, uh, we have a motion and a second, so let's take a vote on this, Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
And I, and I as well, motion passes, uh, three zero to approve the liquor license renewal for Happy Valley LLC. Uh, unfinished business number two is the Happy Valley LLC special amusement permit. And just jump to that real quick. Um, just for informational purposes, this is required for our ordinances to accompany a liquor license if there will be live entertainment or dancing, uh, public hearing, um, is waived. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we. Prove the, the special permit for Happy Valley LLC, we are waiving public hearing based on past practice. Uh, in these special meetings that we've done for other town businesses. Second.
We have a motion is. Motion and a second, take a vote, Jeff?
Aye.
John? And I'm aye as well, motion passes three to zero to approve the special amusement permit for Happy Valley LLC. Uh, next up is, uh, new business number one, we received a board member application. Um, I just wanted to make a correction on the supporting documents. Um, it says the subject is a new historic district commission application, but the, uh, application that we actually received was for the zoning board of Keels. Um, just to clarify, so, um, the town clerk's recommendation is to schedule an interview with the applicant.
Well, just for my clarity, because I. Which one did you go for, the CVA or the historic?
And CVA, I apologize, I did not change the subject line.
No, all good, all good, I just wanted clarity for myself more than anything.
CVA.
What? Looking at our schedule coming up, our next meeting year would be jammed with what we have coming up, so. Either we dip it on the off night or we roll into the last meeting of September.
How staffed is our. How staffed is our zoning board of appeals right now?
We, we need.
We don't have one.
I'm gonna confirm that right now.
We can do, we can, we can commit and do it.
We technically do have a quorum currently. We do have two full seat vacancies and two, uh, vacant alternate seats.
Right, I can do it on the meeting, the last meeting of September.
The second meeting. And, uh, what is the date of the last meeting in September?
Nine twenty-three.
Senator, and you schedule an interview with Mr. Collins on nine twenty-three at six P M. on the third floor in the left area or.
Second.
We have a motion for me. Out of sec. Have a motion in a second. Um, we'll go ahead and take a vote. Jeff?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And I'm an eye as well. Um, motion passes three to zero and we'll this, I need to reach out to Mr. Collins to confirm.
I will reach out to Mr. Collins. Um, did you want to give a backup date just in the event that Mr. Collins is not available?
Following, uh, the following.
The following meeting. Do you want the same time, six P M? Yes, got it.
Thank you. On to town managers' reports and comments.
Uh, the highway department has been replacing sidewalks on Main Creek. We're working on that, repairing all the drive. It's almost ready for pavement. Police department had zero arrests, seven accidents, sixty-one traffic stops. The traffic officer was on vacation and flights low. And we just received a new towel that was ordered in this year, last year's budget. Uh, well, this year's budget. Um, fire departments had thirty-four calls in the last two weeks, three hundred and seventeen here to date. They have been busy handling multiple wildland fires in the area. Uh, there was a four alarm fire in New York and a four alarm fire in Elliott, Woods fires. They spent, um, a lot of time there Friday and then all day Saturday, they're all back there doing that. Code Fortune had ten building permits, three plumbing permits, was served against law occupancy, twenty-nine inspections and four violations. The planning and economic development. Um, they have two new applications in front of the planning board, the wayfinding study is about to start. And our rural avenue study options are coming in and this will be presented to the council either in September or October. Um, transfer station, not much there. The, uh, single slot is going well. Um, we received our first bills and it kind of looks like what we thought was going to happen that the hauling is up a little more because we get a haul of coal and as opposed to wells. However, the tonnage is down because it's being going to, uh, it's a single slot recite it. So the tonnage is, is a lot down. The other part of that is, um, EcoMaine allows us to put our tires. So we came to the MSW now. Because it helps when the trash was even incinerating, you put up to five tires, eight tires in the incentive in the MSW. When it goes for the incinerator, burns harder, burns the tires harder. They let us put obtained tires, so we don't have to pay for hauling the tires anymore. So that would save.
At the library, there was a local poet, Mary McConley, presented at the library on July nineteenth. And on July twentieth, they had local author Sandra Alexander visited the library as well. The door count for July was two thousand eight hundred and twenty-three. I am sparrow for July, three thousand one hundred and thirty-eight. Recreation department will have a new program coordinator starting, uh, next Tuesday, September second, for her name is Jennifer Turcot. The seniors this Wednesday, uh, will be our Labor Day luncheon with most of and entertainment provided by Shades by the Grass, which is always a crowd favorite. The next trip for the seniors is the Duck Boat Tours of Boston, and they'll be going on September ninth. Assessing KRT yesterday was the last day of the informal hearings. They did extend that, extend that a little bit for, um, people's inquiries so they can take care of their questions. All of the back changes as of April first have been sent to our vendor to update. And we will have two new layers on our GIS system. If you've been on the assessing on our website, they'll be the historic district and the different neighborhoods that have been, um, reviewed. In the clerk's office in the last two weeks, they have done a hundred and seventy-two motor vehicles, twelve vital records, eight mystery transactions, eight dog licenses, I'm sorry, four dog licenses, sixteen notary acts, and as a note, the clerk's office will be closed on September tenth for training. In my area, we did get the workman's comp rating. Unfortunately, it is being increased again this year. It's going from one point four to one point seven five. Um, so there that will affect our billing, obviously, the upcoming year. We did have a nice discussion with Jim Toman, who was from MMA. We are working with him. There's three different tiers that we can do for extra safety, for extra discounts on our bill. So we have committed to doing all three tiers by September first. We are almost already there anyway. There's a few things in each tier that we haven't done yet in tier two, tier three. So that'll help us get a bigger discount to hopefully offset the increase.
I'd say a question when you're done with that, that statement.
Right.
Go ahead.
Um, so are, are we concerned about with the amount of construction and things like that that would be happening if that were to impact this?
It will, uh, impact our workman's comp because we don't have any of our staff working in the construction.
Okay, so it's only with our people, not necessarily that.
That's correct.
So.
A part of the reason, we had two big claims. We had a firefighter had suffered a knee injury. We had to get operated on. And we had a public works employee who had a shoulder injury that had to get operated on. So those, when you have more claims on your work is calm, then your praise go up. So.
And they're, they're unusual incident. It's not from any negligence in any way.
Uh, we, we, we push face hard, you know, when we try to do that, but the doctor and I, we don't see a stump and we trip and fall, push your knee. And the other one was, you know, trying to get out of the truck and Sultan fell on the, and he had his arm up there and with his shoulder, it happened. That's their accident.
We've been. Give me a lot of the town.
We have your money, but hopefully yours.
Yeah.
On better news, I finalized a seventy-five thousand dollar grant. So with Southern Maine Planning and Development for the second round of the resilience grants and that, um, is for the solar panels to put towards the renovation of the town hall. We will have, um, hopefully an award, um, had information that's been accepted in December. The tax bills now that we have set the lower rate, our schedules will be mailed this Friday. We are going to send them to the printer before eight A M. tomorrow morning and to ensure that we have, they have the two days. And then the last day of Friday, they'll be mailed. We, Tim and I are working with Betsy to finalize the updated handbook. And I continue to do the year-end duties and up for the upcoming audit. I just got my final list today from the auditor. I'm, I'm going to pull together with my staff. We're working on that diligently. Another piece of good news today, we received three hundred and seventy-five thousand from FEMA. Yay. So that is the last piece that we were waiting for, for the two storms that we had in twenty twenty-four in January and then so this was the Hooper stands flooding, um, piece that was to us. So we have that in house next.
Uh, my office, we've had two code book meetings with Paul Trumaka. Um, that's us updating the code book that we spent the money on. That's the code book company. And so they, they did the review of the book. And they're looking for state changes, word changes, graphical,ishi, they, those kind of things. Those two hundred and fifteen questions that they kicked back to us, we're going to have done by October first. So we're sitting down going line item by line item, going through the book and try and answer those questions so that we can send it back to them and they can start rewriting those things. They're not changing the substance of the codes. They're not changing the, the, the variants and deed for a building permit. They're not changing anything like that. They're just the structure of the content, public laws and correct verbiage for
Proper grammar.
Proper grammar and stuff like that. That's really all they're doing. The rest of that stuff, that's still the laws. Um, still working on finalizing Chad Brothers contract with the attorneys. We're very close, but we're, we're working on that. Um, been meeting with Oak Point, Chad Brothers, myself and Jen, uh, for fifty percent early estimate. Um, you got the report last week and we're hoping to get to ninety percent sometime early September. Give that to you. Uh, been meeting with the fire chief and EMS director on EMS bi-weekly meetings on progress. You'll have a project update on September ninth. The fire chief will be coming and giving you an overview where we're at. As Jen said, we met with Jim Toman from MMA. He's the risk management services, um, underwriter. Uh, he came and he looked at public works and the transfer station visit as well as the three tier program so we can get discounts on our work is confident money. Uh, we had the employee appreciation cookout. Um, the leadership award presented by the council, Mallory presented on your behalf, and I was given to Nikki Drake from RAC. And last year, the employee of the year award was presented for last year was presented to our assessment run shop. So all the work she did and giving you valuation and all the challenges shared and do that. Um, we're finalizing a draft of the handbook to be sent to legal review. Hopefully getting that done. Uh, so obviously setting the lower rate. And today worked on the ball field. So what had happened was the ball field, because of the water beam, you can't water the ball field, it becomes so dry. We, on Monday, Jay brought it to me. We had to start looking at whether or not we could play in the fields. Originally, we initially thought we were going to have to close down all of it soccer. So there are three soccer programs that entail six hundred kids that run on those fields seven days a week. It's our recreational, uh, recreation soccer program. The Christian Academy uses it for their soccer program and Mashwood travel soccer uses it. So we've been talking with sports fields, who does our fields and, um, going back and forth, the best way to do this. So we finally came to the conclusion, we originally started out yesterday, we communicated to all three of you. It looked like we might have to close the fields. Um, we tried to find another way to do it. So what we've decided today, I've implemented through the codes that says we can do this at my level is we're going to stop all outside playing. So Mashwood Soccer will not be able to play for now. And the Christian Academy, they're on. Uh, we're going to get some winter dry field, grass seed. Is that what they call it? And a sports field said, spread that all over the place because it germinates real fast with a drop of water like gremlins do. Um, so Jay went on that today. And then we're going to get water from the company on two thirty-six, bank dropped water. We have a soccer account that is.
Self-funded.
Self-funded. We're going to use the money out of that. So it won't cost taxpayers this one dollars load. They bring seven thousand gallons of water. The fire department is going to put up the area ladder and spray the fields and salt fields twice a week, hopefully. Doing that germinating grass and just allowing only our own rock kids to play, mainly play on weekends. Um, hopefully we'll be okay. If not, we'll have to shut down the fields completely. Um, but sports fields, just to guarantee all that sports fields could be here either during our one and do it actual physical hands-on. Ball fields were both Mashwood, uh.
Harsh juice baseball.
Mashwood and baseball.
And Mashwood. Baby softball.
Softball. So both of those, we, they, we can't do anything with them. We don't have the capacity to do anything with those, those fields and close those. So that we don't ruin. We spent a lot of money on the softball field and baseball field this past year. You know, if we continue to play on with those balls, it's going to get ruined. So we shut them down. So that's the plan as of right now. I, I want to thank Jay, Nikki, um, Nick from the fire department, everybody put their heads together to try to make this work today and scrambled and so we're hoping that this works. Keep our fingers crossed that we'll, we'll put enough water and stuff on it to get it green so that they can play and just with our, just our kids, our wreck kids. We, so we went and looked at it. There's still green grass on the soccer field. The practice field is brown. So, uh, just, uh, like I say, just to confirm everything. They're, they're coming over tomorrow. We're going to try, we're hopefully supposed to get a sprinkle of rain. Maybe tomorrow or Friday, just sprinkled, but so we put seven thousand on each field twice a week. That's fourteen thousand gallons. That might help. That's where we're at. That's my report.
I'm going to be the landscape nerd right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I unfortunately don't think that the watering the fields twice a week with new seed is going to be, have any beneficial to it. And the reason I say that is because we are so dry right now that any water that goes onto that field is going to just be sucked all the way down into the ground. And what you need right now for seed germination is for the water to stay on top and stay moist. So you do the watering, the water all soaps down. The seed is not going to stay as wet as it needs to, to germinate. Unfortunately, fall is a super time to do any kind of seed application because what is helpful is the morning dew that occur when we get the cold nights. The morning dew actually acts as a natural irrigation. I'm just concerned that where we're still at like the Indian summer like weather, um, I mean, I want to say if it's not that expensive, it's a shot in the dark, but I also don't want to do something that we're just setting up for failure. That makes sense.
That's why we got sports field coming and wanted to kind of give us the final nod one way or the other. The only other alternative, the two alternatives. We let them play in the fields and we know they're going to destroy the fields and then the fields are done. Um, and as I told you that if we have to reggerminate the whole fields next year, it'll be baby grass so that, um, that there'll be no playing on our fields next year. We'll be no sports programs next year. The other, the other alternative is if, if we, you know, if we do it, we get some rain and come back great. Um, but if we just let our kids, our two hundred kids on the weekends, just that might not hopefully be in bad, but if it starts to get any worse than it is, we're going to have to close the soccer program, our soccer program to get everybody out. We're just trying to accommodate our community first, if we can, if it works. So it's just the cost of the seed and you got to discount on that. Um, and Jay's just spreading it. He's just putting it in his tractor and running up and down the field. And then it's just the cost of the water. So we'll try anything at this point to, you're probably right. I dare you probably in sure hour, but we'll try anything before we say no to the, the rec program and kid, everybody's local, assigned us and so we'll try. If it doesn't work, then we'll just probably fall on it.
It's, I'm sure this doesn't have to be said, but, um, and I'm sure Jade's already on top of this, but the best thing that we could do right now for those fields is not to mow them at all.
Yeah, they haven't been mowed weeks.
Okay.
They haven't been mowed in I think, I think since early July.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, we haven't been on them at all. They're just nothing to mow.
Yeah.
I've moved on to three years. That's all I have on my chair.
Okay, um, on to councillor member comments. I'll start with you, John.
Uh, I can't understand the staff for everything you said. Um, I was not acting particularly, but I appreciate everything that the, that the full staff does. It's been a busy year, lots have been done. Um, so thank you very much and thank you for the overlay of the paperwork that again gave you the view that it was last year. So you guys making this really easy. And my last plea, if you have full papers for the town council, you shouldn't be sitting in this audience watching what we do. That's all I'm going to say on that.
Jeff?
I don't have much. Um, I did, I had to compete, um, at the transfer station as, uh, EcoMaine was um, pulling in and setting up on that Saturday. Uh, seems like it was forever ago at this point. Um, but, um, I just kind of hung around and talked with them for a little bit, not too long, but just kind of introduced myself and thanked them for the partnership and uh, seemed like really nice people and, uh, you know, very much on the education and, um, you know, I think that there's a, a good relationship uh, opportunity there for, uh, for the community. So, uh, excited about it. So, thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to apologize. I just realized that, um, when we did the approval of the town council minutes, I actually never asked for discussion. But I, I review them. There was no errors. So it's okay that I missed that. Um, second off, I just wanted to remind, um, the town that school starts, um, next week. So be mindful. Be mindful, school buses will be back, um, on the roads, and when they have their stop signs out, that does not mean. Pass the school bus slowly, it means to stop and let the kids pop the bus. Um, and just a reminder to the town to take a deep breath this weekend, it is Labor Day weekend and traffic is more than likely. Going to be a little unruly, um, through downtown and on our back roads that people like to cut through. Um, and I hope that everybody does have an enjoyable Labor Day weekend. Um, and with that, let's adjourn this meeting.
Uh, you're just gonna be.
I'm asking.
You were re-adjourned. Second.
All on favor?
Hi.
Hi.